Call of Village Board Special Meeting to order and Stanford a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight's special meeting is the meeting that, roll call.
Trustee Pierce is absent, trustee Mason. Trustee Mason is here, trustee Dominiac.
Here.
Sorry, Lori, here.
Trustee Paulus?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Here. Tonight's special meeting of the Village Board is just a continuation of the meeting from two weeks ago that was canceled due to a quorum issue. So that's why this will be pretty much the same agenda. It hasn't been modified much at all. So on my report tonight, I got the opportunity to fill a vacancy on our Village Board. We're replacing trustee Eos who spent two years on the board. Very, two very good years. Sorry to see him go. Very good asset to the community. Was a great trustee. Chose a different path. He came to us, sent the letter, stated that he was contemplating on moving out of the area and sent the letter back in November stating that he would no longer serve as January 1st. That brings us to today, trying to fill a hard seat. Very hard seat because you never want to lose a good trustee. And Dan definitely was that person and we'll miss him dearly for that. But the good news is having such a great community and a community that I grew up and loved so much. I really had a lot of people I could have picked. But what I really was trying to look for is trying to find somebody that had a wealth of knowledge, somebody that has a passion for the community, somebody that really has the drive and all that stuff. And I approached a couple of people, but my pick was Mary Peterson. Mary, a lifelong resident of Antioch, married to Brian Peterson. Goes back to my grade school, St. Peters. You know, we go back, you know, our families go back even with, I went to school with her brother and sister, you know. And she also is a sequoia, graduated from Antioch High School. She's a founding member of the District 34 Educational Foundation. She served on our park board many years ago, under the leadership of Marilyn Scheinflug, who I also was on her, I was sitting under Marilyn as a trustee. And also served on the Village Board under two mayors. She served from 2003 to 2007, under Mayor Marvellis and Mayor Dorothy Larson. And also served on several committees. I had the pleasure and honor to sit next to her for those four years. And I'm glad to say that I'm honored to bring Mary back to our board. I think she'll be an asset. I think she'll bring a wealth of knowledge to this board and really help drive and guide this community where I feel this board's going. Personally, myself, I feel as that I, a person that likes to work with people that have the same type of vision and I think Mary's got that vision for Antioch. One thing I wasn't looking for, I wasn't looking for a yes vote. I wasn't looking for anybody that would just vote out because I want certain things done. I know that Mary is not that person. I know Mary's got her own mind. Mary's gonna make the decisions that Mary wants to make. And I'm lucky that I'm bringing her in front of the board tonight for for a vote to put her alongside of us here to help guide us and drive us for at least two more years. And again, Mary, thank you for accepting the position. And I hope that I get the acknowledgement from the board that feels the same way as I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that being said, I'll need a, somebody from the board to make a motion to recommend Mary to fill the vacant seat of trustee Eos for two years, term ending in 2023 of April.
Motion.
That's motion by Mary Dominiac. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is to approve the resolution as presented.
Correct. We do have a resolution and I'm gonna have our clerk, Romine's going to swear him on Zoom. This will be the first in my history, in my position, that we're doing an appointment on Zoom. And we're gonna kind of do this differently. I'm gonna, and we'll take the roll after this and then we'll have you stand and do the normal procedure, Mary. Okay? All right, we got a motion and a second and I'll have the clerk take roll.
Mason?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
And that's, I got confirmation from four yeses and that motion's carried and welcome, Mary, to our board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, I just flipped our camera around here. So you'll see clerk Romine's in front of the podium here as far as her. She's gonna have you do your thing here.
Mary, if you could raise your right hand, please. I, Mary J. Peterson, having been elected, appointed as trustee of the Village of Antioch and the County of Lake, to solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for procedural clarification tonight, I will be putting her in the same position as trustee Eos. She'll be number three on the board here as far as sequence. So Mary will be called on number three.
Okay.
Three.
Yeah, they flipped my camera. Okay. Moving forward, do we have any things from the citizens wishing to address the board? Clerk Romine, did anybody? Okay, we do have one comment coming in from a resident from Oakwood Knolls, Mike O'Meara. I'll have Jim quickly just respond to that real fast. It's about the survey and I just want to make sure, Jim, just make sure we all got it. Jim?
Yeah, so the Oakwood Knolls Property Owners Association has produced a survey. There's, there's a letter attached to it. There's a plan attached to it for what they intend to do with the Fishing Pier Park area. And they've devised some questions that, and that, by the way, that was a request of this board to go, go back, survey the Oakwood Knolls community to see what their appetite or approval was for vacation of Lake Avenue, or is it Park Avenue, I'm sorry? And the improvements that they want to do on their own property. So I did forward that to the Village Board. One trustee did comment to me and I relayed those comments to Mr. O'Meara. But yeah, if you could kind of take some time, go back, take a look at that survey, see if it's, you know, respective of what your wishes are or if you think there are comments or omissions or any, any questions about it and submit those to me and I can get, relay those back to the Oakwood Knolls Property Owners Association. I think they're eager to move forward, but as directed by the board, they were to, you know, kind of survey the community. So if, and I will distribute those again, I'll distribute that survey again. And if you could please comment back to me or if you have no comment, just say that you have no comment on it. You think it's good as is, fine. And then I personally think the next step would be that they, you know, do just that. Go ahead and survey the Oakwood Knolls community and see how they feel about their, their plans to acquire the right of way and do the improvements down there. And then we can bring it back to the board to continue the discussion of that, that area, that vacation of that right of way.
Thank you, Jim, for that report. We'll go ahead and jump right into our regular meeting then.
I made a comment on that. Just, just one little comment. You know, the survey's great and everything, but the problem with it is that you've got a community of all of Oakwood Knolls versus four people. So what, how do you think that's gonna turn out? You know, I mean, the, the people that live down there that, you know, that have the issues, it's pretty hard to, you know, to weigh their vote against everybody else's. So I, I'm not sure that the, the survey's gonna be the, the end of it all because it's just, I mean, it's, the odds are overwhelmingly in the rest of the subdivision's hands.
If I could comment on that, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Trustee Paulus, were you at the meeting when we talked about this? I can't remember.
I was.
Okay. I think the challenge for a survey is knowing, I thought that, that when we had this discussion, that the village was gonna be involved with the development of this survey, which I guess, Jim, you're suggesting that we would have that participation by giving feedback. And then I guess the question is, how does it get distributed? How did the data get collected? How does the data get reviewed to assure that the data is valid? So I think we have to think about, are we gonna have access to the raw data as well so that we can look at it ourselves? I think from looking at the survey, and I'm the person that gave feedback to Administrator Time, I think it needs some work to make sure that what you're concerned about, trustee Paulus, is, is not an issue. I think it's just working on the survey to make sure that the questions give a sense of whether or not, you know, it's one thing to say, yes, all these people want to have this done, but one of the things that we would be looking for is how are they gonna maintain it? And is the community gonna be willing to provide the revenues for them to maintain it? So I think taking another look at the survey, and I suggested to Administrator Time that I'd be happy to work with them on and if they would find that helpful. It's not gonna be perfect, obviously, but at least give us a sense of helping us to make that decision.
I mean, I would like to see things like, you know, is, is if it was done on like Survey Monkey or something like that and then we have access to it so we could see comments and everything. Also, I'd like to see some questions in there similar to like, you know, if, I assume it's anonymous. So if they did an anonymous one, if you asked a question like, you know, do you pay association dues? Because I remember when the gentleman that was speaking a couple of years ago said that, you know, only like 40 people were paying. You know, if the answer is no, then, you know, and there's only a few people that are. And then, you know, do you, will you use it? Do you use it? Because again, if there's only a handful of those, you know, there might be only a handful of people who paid dues that actually use it. So just some questions like that to, to sort of weed out some of the, the comments. But I'd like to, I'd like us to be able to see what the comments are also.
Well, and I'm right there with you, trustee Paulus, because one of the things that I thought about is, you know, are you a member? If you are, fine. If you're not, why not? You know, would you become a member if this was more, you know, those kinds of questions? So I think you and I are on the same page and that I think that the challenge for the Survey Monkey though is, and I know because I talked with some people from Oakwood Knolls, is that how do you reach the people that?
Don't have a computer?
I mean, those little things, but you could do paper surveys and then they could put the data in. I mean, there's a lot of ways to do that.
Right, yeah. I agree.
I would just ask you for those comments to me. I'll forward them to Oakwood Knolls and, and, you know, it may not be a perfect survey, but, you know, you requested they do a survey. So, you know, let's, let's give them as much help as we can, I guess, with our comments and, and, you know, suggestions and we'll see what we get back.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else? If not, we'll jump right into our regular business. Okay. We have no consent agenda item tonight. First item, I would like a motion to ratify the December 30th, 2020 payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff. I'll need a motion in a second.
I move to ratify payment of accounts payable in the amount of $1,064,000, or $64,498.78. The big payment in there is 665,000 going for paving the roads to Schroder Asphalt and then $150,000 insurance payment to Arthur Gallagher.
Okay, that was motion been made by trustee Paulus, seconded by trustee Dominiac. Any questions, trustee Mason, on the motion?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
Dominiac. He's a native here at the end.
Okay, thank you, trustee Dominiac. And trustee Paulus?
No questions, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one absent, motions carried. Consideration of payments of accounts payable is prepared by staff.
I move to approve the payment of accounts payable in the amount of $122,648.33.
Okay, that's motion by trustee Paulus. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Peterson. Any questions, trustee Mason?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
No, Mayor.
Trustee Johnson, or Paulus, I'm sorry, Paulus.
No, no questions, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Roll, please.
Mason?
Yes, ma'am.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, five voting yes, one's absent, the motion's carried. Consideration of an emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency related to coronavirus ordinance number 21-01-01.
Move to approve. Hopefully go ahead and do.
Is that wave in the second reading, trustee Dominiac? Okay. Okay. Trustee Dominiac made the motion, waving the second reading, and who seconded it?
Me.
Okay, trustee Peterson seconded it. Any questions, trustee Mason?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
No questions.
Trustee Paulus?
No questions, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, clerk take roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, five voting yes, one's absent, motions carried. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to purchase two 2021 police interceptor, receptors, Ford explorers for the amount of $36,507.30 each from Koonas Ford, as well as a purchase of emergency lighting equipment from Ultra Stroke in the amount of $14,000 each. And the lettering from EBY Graphics for $1,000 each, with the total cost of both with, with the equipment in the amount of $103,014.60 under Resolution 21-02. So I'll need that motion in a second.
So moved.
Okay, motion by trustee Mason, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by trustee Paulus. Any questions, trustee Mason?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
No questions.
Trustee Paulus?
My only question is, did Joyce say that the lease program is no longer available?
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, and then trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
A roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, that's five voting yes, one is absent, the motion's carried. Consideration of a resolution approving an agreement with the Lakota Group for Downtown Beautification Plan in the amount of $49,250. That would be Resolution 21-03. I'll need a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Mason made that motion, seconded by trustee Paulus. Any questions, trustee Mason?
No questions, I think.
Okay, trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
Not a question, but I just want to make sure that the board is aware of the fact that, and I know that this will be part of the process. I still am concerned about the money and the focus, but the board should be aware of the fact that the Garden Club has expressed concerns regarding how they're gonna be involved and what the impact will be on the mini park that they have been taking care of for a long time. I know that they wanted to comment on this, but didn't realize the process. So I just wanted to make sure that the board knew of what their concerns were.
I think Michael brought it to my attention and I gave him direction that the Lakota Group will definitely make that part of their focal, focal point as far as focal groups and stuff like that. I don't believe anybody sitting on this board and also Lakota would want to take many years of their, they're taking care of that park and, and try to destroy what beautiful things they've done to it. So again, I think the board would probably preserve that also to protect the Garden Club. So again, I think that'll be a whole separate parkway that we'll have to kind of look at as special just because of the specialty that has gone into it for many, many years of volunteerism. So I think that would be definitely a must.
And I only raise the question not because I thought the board wouldn't support it. I just wanted more to be aware. And I am also still concerned about where the dollars are coming from for this, but that's all I have.
Okay. All right, trustee Paulus?
No questions, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Since we got a question of finances, Joy, you want to come on in on this one? Just so we, we, before we do vote on it, that we, we all have a feeling of comfort that the money's coming from somewhere that it's in the budget or we do have a resource. Just want to make sure we get that in.
As Jim mentioned earlier, there was $10,000 budgeted for the vision in. That, we can use that part. And I think some of this is gonna carry over into the new fiscal year. So we will budget for it. However, there are sufficient funds that if we had to pay for the entire thing, we do have the funds available in the Business District Fund.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's good to know. One of the things that would be helpful for me is to have a better understanding of how those business funds are being used because I know we have a lot interplayed and a lot of really good things that are being done. But whenever the question is raised, is where does the money come from? It's from the Business District. So it would be helpful for me to get an accounting of how those dollars are being spent, where they've been allocated thus far and what remains.
Right. So if you remember at our, maybe our last meeting or the meeting before, we brought a resolution to move funds from one Business District to the other. Since the Central Business District is not generating, it's only been a few months, it's not generating enough funds yet. Each time that we need to make a payment, I will come to you with a resolution to move the funds to make that payment and it's gonna be for a specific project. And we intentionally designed it that way so that everything is transparent and you have a full accounting of what is spent out of the district.
Yeah, thank you for that. And maybe I'm just looking for a summary to help me remember everything. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dominiac. Trustee Paulus?
I have no questions, Your Honor.
Thank you. And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, and have the clerk take roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
No.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, we have four voting yes, one voting no, and one is absent. Okay. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance of a $15 million note as required by the terms of the Handy Foil Development Agreement approved on April 9th, 2018, Resolution 21-04.
So as you may recall, when we entered into a development agreement with Handy Foil, the, the current agreement was, we did redo that agreement to include a $15 million incentive to bring Handy Foil into Antioch. Without that incentive, they would not have come to Antioch. But I also want to remind those, especially those listeners who are not familiar with how a TIF district works. The property taxes collected from the businesses within the district can only be spent on TIF eligible expenses that are incurred in the district boundaries. So there, we can't do anything else with this money but spend it within the district. And this district that we're talking about is the IDI Corporate Center. So I just wanted to, to, you know, get, let everyone be aware of how that works.
Okay, thank you, Joy, for that. Do they have a motion in a second on this? Okay, I'll need a, a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by trustee Paulus, second by trustee Johnson. Any questions, trustee Mason?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
No questions.
And trustee Paulus?
No questions, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, clerk take roll, please.
Mason?
Yes, ma'am.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, five voting yes, one absent, motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution ratifying the renewal and extension of the collective bargaining agreement with the fluternal order of police. That would be Resolution 20-57. I'd like to get a motion in a second if I can in the board.
So moved.
So moved, Lori.
Who moved it?
I did.
Okay, that's trustee Paulus and then second by trustee Peterson.
Trustee Mason.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, everybody's so faint. Trustee Mason did make the motion and it was seconded by trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, any questions, trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions.
Trustee Dominiac?
I just have a question for the chief and for the administrator. This new law that got passed unfortunately, does that impact in any way the agreement? Or do you anticipate that it will affect the agreement during its contract period?
There will be some minor impacts we'll have to address if the legislation is signed by the governor. The biggest being the body cam language, as there were some changes proposed in the, in the legislation that went through. Our new CBA doesn't incorporate language for body language, but it does require that we open it for discussion and amendment should the legislation change where it appears likely is gonna happen. But that would be, that would be really be the only impacts directly to the CBA itself.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Anything else, Mary?
Nothing, no.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Paulus?
No questions, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one's absent, this motion's carried. Consideration of a resolution authoring, authorizing a special event liquor license for the Village of Antioch Winter Wine Walk. Consideration of a resolution authoring a, authorizing a special event liquor license for the Village of Antioch Winter Wine Walk to be held on February twentieth, twenty twenty-one, waiving all fees. That's resolution twenty-one oh five. I need a motion.
So moved by Ed.
Okay, motion made by Ed Mason, seconded by Trustee Johnson. Any questions, Trustee Mason?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, Trustee Dominiac?
What happened? I thought we approved this for January twenty-third. What happened?
COVID, they canceled it because of the
We were not issued, the state was not issuing liquor licenses during that period. And I think we're either reapplying, or we're going to amend our applications to include the new date. And we are hopeful that the state will issue the liquor licenses, so we can proceed with what amounts to a modified wine walk with more distancing and restricted numbers, and we're trying to proceed with that event on a on a safe basis. So it seemed to work out well in the fall, and we're hopeful that it will work out again well in February.
We can thank the state. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Paulus?
No questions, Your Honor.
And Trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Mason?
Mason?
Trustee Mason?
Yes. My microphone.
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one's absent, this motion's carried. Consideration of an ordinance authorizing the village administrator to salvage and otherwise dispose of equipment, that would be ordinance number twenty-one dash oh one dash oh two. I'll entertain a motion in the, wave in the second reading.
So moved, waving a second reading.
Okay, Trustee made the motion.
I'll second.
And seconded by Trustee Johnson. Any questions, Trustee Mason?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
No questions.
Trustee Paulus?
No questions, Your Honor.
And Trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay. That's it as far as that. Do we have any staff report? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one's absent, motion's carried. Uh, yeah, I got just Jim Kind, Administrator Kind.
Just, just a quick report. I'm sure you're all aware that the Village Hall project came to conclusion. So we are, I believe, in the process of getting the chamber back in. I believe Barb is moving her stuff back into the chamber space. I do have a final invoice to come in slightly under budget, but essentially on budget. So that's, that's just for your information. And I and Clerk Romine have been working in a very similar fashion to how we went through a process to select the Lakota Group with our marketing consultants. We put RFQ out for firms to help us with marketing. We had five responses, and we are going through just almost an identical process. Clerk Romine and I are going through those. We we ranked them, and we've interviewed some. And we will be making a recommendation to the village board on February eighth. So I just, I just want you to be aware, if you have any questions or want to see the the qualifications or anything, please just let me know. I'd be happy to share that information with you. Good news is, is we had some real good people, and again, it was a tough decision with some highly qualified marketing firms. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. Clerk Romine?
Yes, the staff has been working on creating a YouTube channel to put our recordings of village board meetings on our website. We are close to having the most recent meetings done, and those will be posted hopefully by the end of this week with a link to to the public to view past meetings. So that's all.
Thank you, Lori, for doing that. I know it's, you know, it's it's kind of new for us, because obviously, you know, this past year, probably eighty percent of our meetings were on Zoom. So it's nice to know that people are able to view those as quickly as we can get them on there, so.
With the new, with the new COVID rules, are we going to be allowed to be back in?
Yes, we will be.
Okay.
Not, not in our setting here at Village Hall, but we can go similar. But there is a difference that it's, the restrictions are a little tighter than even before, so we'll get those ironed up, but we're still going to be on Zoom also.
Okay.
Both, so.
So all the Zoom recordings from when we started doing Zoom be put on?
Yeah, she's going to download that eventually, yes.
We're working our way backwards.
Your what?
We're working our way backwards, but eventually all of the Zoom recordings will be there, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, any committee reports from any of the trustees? Trustee Mason, anything to report on your committee? I think you have a good one for this week, because your guys did a great job, the public groups.
Dennis did a fantastic job. There was, there was a few, a couple, couple people on the center cuts and and and, you know, people wanted their stuff done. I think Dennis handled it pretty well, so they did a great job.
I got some good feedback from the few merchants downtown. I got a a message from a few of them that really appreciated them clearing the sidewalks, and there was quite a bit of snow, so. Anything else, Trustee Mason?
No, no, nothing else.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson, I know it's hard for you because you really haven't said on anything, so if you want to say anything based on just your no appointment, that's up to you.
No, I'm, I'm, thank you for considering me, and I'll do my best to help Antioch as much as I can.
I know you will. Thank you for accepting. Trustee Dominiac?
No report. Most of what I would report on, we talked about tonight.
Okay, thank you for that report. Trustee Dominiac, Trustee Paulus?
Just looking forward to starting the new budget process, and I'd just like to welcome Trustee Peterson.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Trustee Johnson?
I just want to, I'm looking forward to working with Mary, so congratulations. I'm excited.
Thank you.
And the only thing that I want to close the meeting up is we're just all praying and hoping that Trustee Pierce comes back healthy. I know he's went through a tough time this past month, December twenty-ninth, when he actually went in for a procedure. And I know his heart's with us. I know he's probably listening, maybe, and we hope to see him back here soon and and get him back here with us. That being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Dominiac, I believe, made the motion, and I heard Trustee Johnson second it. All favor by signaling by saying aye.
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 Meeting's closed.